We're going to call the meeting to order. We will start with a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live in and work around the Village of Hicksville. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome everyone. It's nice to see you here tonight. And especially Mick Makraski, your last meeting on Hicksville Village Council for the time being. I'm sure it's going to be a sad evening for you. We'll let you enjoy it for now. Okay, roll call please. Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Present.
Hedley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Makraski.
Here.
Thank you. You have the December 5th council meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion to approve those. Does anyone have any questions or corrections?
Anyone does, I'll make the motion to approve. Do you mind if I do that?
I'll second.
Roll call please. Makraski.
Upstee.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Thank you. You have the bills in your packet. Are there any questions about the bills tonight?
Yes ma'am. On the front page, water fairground meters, we had meters on our last billing and I thought that the end result was there was going to end up with a meter down there. Has that changed?
I don't think they're done.
Well, no, but you don't have to keep buying meters if you're only going to end up with one.
There's going to be more than one meter down there Ron. They're just going to redo some of the ones that are inside that we're going to take out. There's going to be like four or five meters on the outside because there's four or five different paths.
What happened to the original plan of this new line going in and we were only going to do one meter so that the village didn't have to go in there anymore?
I thought the original plan was we're going to do it with interior meters. They're still going to have the exterior ones, but there's still going to be four or five of them out there that are still the villages.
That's not how I had envisioned the plan.
I'm trying to do a recall on that whole situation. I brought my apologies. But I know some, like you said, some of the interior meters are getting pulled and we weren't going to address those anymore.
And those are the ones that got subtracted from the outside meters. That's why they weren't going to...
I thought that, I guess I should have researched it a little more. I was going off memory. I thought they were going to leave those for some sort of a leak detection and when they put that new six inch, I believe it is line in there, they were going to just, that's it, that was going to be it. We had a meter there and we were done going in there.
Okay, I was going to add something, but I could be very, will be wrong also, so...
That's the way we should have done it.
I will get with Jesse and maybe in time I can have her explain what the final process was.
Ken wouldn't know if he was here because he was at that meeting. I know it's either paperwork or it's not.
And on that Molly Valley planning on the second page, we always have a loan administration fee, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Those are my only two questions, Mayor, and if nobody has anything, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call please. Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Here.
Hedley.
Yes.
Makraski.
Yes.
Cheryl ordered him a book so that he would understand. Did you get one when you went to that class?
When I went to a class.
Yeah. There's no class because...
They only have the class every two years.
Cheryl was asking about the expense for the council book that was on the approved bills list.
It's for Eric. It's in his mailbox. I forgot to tell him.
Speaking of, yeah, tell him about his mailbox, but also I have a note to remind all of you council members that your mailbox kind of seemed to have some papers and maybe some of them you store, maybe some of you store them there, but just in case you might want to look and see if it's anything you need to read. Why are you looking at me Ron?
That was cute, Mayor, storage.
A nice way of putting it.
So we have minutes from the December 8th Planning Commission Public Hearing and that was to discuss an application for a zoning change submitted by Nelson Hirschberger on Wendell Avenue. Okay, anyone have any questions about that? All right. And then there's a notice of a public hearing to be held January 3rd, 6:00 PM in the council chambers to rezone a portion of Central Place Addition, also known as 300 Window Avenue from a mobile home park to R4 Residential and a portion from Mobile Home Park to M1 Light Industrial. So if there's anyone that has an interest in that public hearing, they should attend that on January 3rd down at 108 North Main Street.
Well, that one's going to be here.
Oh, that's here?
That's here. That's at our regular meeting.
Oh, that's at our council meeting.
That's on Nelson's zoning that they just approved.
Oh, okay.
That's our, that's our public hearing and then we can have, pass our ordinance or at the next meeting.
Okay. Yep, thanks for correcting me on that. Okay, next it says we have an EMHNT represented to answer questions and report on the progress of the long-term control plan, Phase 1. Who would like to speak? We'll use the microphone over there.
Hello everyone, I'm Mark Argy at EMHNT. We give an update on the progress. There were five projects initially in the Phase 1 of the long-term control plan, three of which had already been bid out and substantial constructions complete. That's the Ogent Street separation, the Antwerp Drive storm sewer improvements and the Pearl Columbian Hattery Street storm sewer improvements. Recently, we just had a job go out to bid. That would be the Clearview subdivision where we'll be replacing the storm, or excuse me, we'll be replacing the sanitary sewer and we'll be replacing a water main that's going on along that drive as well as improving the drainage to stop the flooding in the front yards. And sometime about the first week in January, we'll start the bidding process for a downtown storm sewer separation project. So that is the progress of the five jobs in the long, Phase 1 of the long-term control plan.
Which entails South Main Street. When you say downtown?
Yes, downtown is Brian Main.
And Clearview is Haven Drive?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions regarding that?
Any idea when Haven Drive will be starting? I know the bids, we accept them, any idea?
Depending on, my name is Tim Kearns, EMHNT as well, construction manager administrator. Currently, I believe it's in front of council or at least it came through committee that Underground Utilities is the apparent love at this point. I don't know if it's ever been truly awarded yet, so we'll kind of wait for that as well. But if they are awarded that project, they are going to look at mid-January depending on weather. Obviously, if it's 10 degrees out, hydraulic type of equipment don't work real well, so they're probably going to wait until that weather prohibits. But they're planning on starting in mid-January is the long, at least the long-term plan at this point.
Do we have a completion on it? Completion date?
80 days.
80 days once it begins?
180.
180 once it begins.
I mean, 80 days once it begins.
Okay.
And they will have the opportunity, starting in the winter, if there is a weather delay, they will, I'd be able to add to this 180 days because of weather, but we don't anticipate it. We're anticipating if they can start and work straight through without any delays, it's about a four-month project, probably no more than that. So we've given them about two months of lead time with weather and spring weather or whatever.
Can I go ahead and make a comment on Clearview Haven? Committee talked, we talked to Jeff and Ken about the lateral issue we have out there with the number of shared laterals and everything else. At one point, we were talking about replacing all the laterals. We weren't going to do that. We were going to inspect as we went. If we thought that they were bad, we were going to tell the residents they had to replace at their own cost. We've even backpedaled off of that a little bit, being in the wintertime, being so many shared laterals out there, we're not even sure which lateral, if it's a tie-in, would be responsible for the intrusion on that lateral instead of making everybody dig up their laterals and maybe finding it wasn't them, it was their neighbor that had the issue. So there's a lot of additional cost on that. Jeff brought up a good point, being wintertime, you don't have as much flow, maybe intrusion if you would see in a lateral as you would maybe in the spring or summer with that kind of flow. So committee recommendation was at that time to not have the people replace their laterals into the sanitary.
And Mike, and Mike Budwood, we'll leave it, when our inspector's on site, if we see that there is more flow than we would anticipate, what we'll do is we will document those as we, as they come across those, show those, and then they can be readdressed at a later time. It won't be a fail-safe and we won't pick up all at all times, especially again since it's in the winter construction. The amount of water flowing through the ground and into the, into any INI, into any open lateral will be down compared to spring. And maybe by the time that that work is being done, I don't know whether the contractor's going to start in the water or whether they're going to start in the storm or sanitary. So they may start in the water and by the time you get to sanitary, we may be in the spring, so we'll be able to identify those a little bit more efficiently. But we're not going to do anything. We're going to hook them back up as they are and then we'll just document the ones that we feel that are, have higher flows than what we would anticipate normal.
Hi, my name is Marcy Land with EMHNT and I just wanted to kind of add on to Ken is one of the things, I believe the village has their own CCTV equipment. Right, is that correct? One of the things that you guys could do is during a rainfall, a light rainfall event, because I'm assuming you won't see much during, if it's a really heavy rainfall event, but during a very light rainfall event is really when you're going to want to go out there and maybe try to televise that and you can see where that clear water's coming in because quite frankly, you're not seeing that water on a daily basis. You're seeing that water during rainfall events and it's coming in as in flow, not necessarily ground seepage is when you guys are having overflow problems. So that would be one thing I could recommend to utilize your staff to go out there, if you get a light rainfall, bring CCTV cameras out when the sewers aren't surging per se, but that are, where you're experiencing that II come in and you can televise and see which ones have an issue. That would be highly recommended. And then the other thing, as I reviewed the project with Mark, was one of the concerns is kind of using the maintenance crew to make sure that the clean outs, there's a lot of the clean outs on the back of the rear properties and the low-lying areas, making sure that those are staying on and staying tight to avoid that clean water getting into the sanitary sewer. Those would be things I would keep on the regular checklist because if you have a low-lying area, you have a clean out, an easy way to drain that low-lying area is to go remove that clean out, not understanding the impacts it's going to cause downstream. We see it in a lot of communities where the residents will go out and pull that cap. So they're not understanding the impacts of what they're doing, so just regularly checking those if you see that you're starting to get more flow. Those would be two things that you would want to put on the maintenance to do for future.
How was this project bid? It was bid to basically ignore the laterals? Is that how it was bid?
We will be tying back in all the laterals to the right-of-way line. We are not allowed to go beyond the right-of-way line at this point for this project, so we will go to the right-of-way line legally. That's all the farther we are allowed to go.
There are serious public right-of-way issues and it's something that you have to determine as a community, how you're going to handle those laterals, who owns the lateral, who's taking the responsibility for the lateral. A lot of communities say the homeowner owns up to their Y. I'm not sure as a community what the stance is. I know communications with city staff had said that we were going to rehab the existing sanitary sewer and make that part within the public right-of-way tight and then the private issues would have to be dealt with at a later basis.
And none of that was worked out until the other day?
No, we were talking about, I mean, up to that point in time with the laterals, I mean, because of committee and Ken.
It's been discussed for quite a while.
The front row has, you know, let's take the property that I let them go across. There's three, you know, the Runndale Common Sewer that run out to the sewer on Haven Drive. And that's true all the way down through there from the front row.
Even the back rows, right? From what I understand.
I can't answer the back row.
Back row is pretty close to being all individual. The front row, Mike's 100% right, in fact, I tied two or three or four of them in like that. So...
Dave Martin, a resident out there on Haven Drive, came into my office today and he just said that he would like me to make two points since he couldn't be here tonight. Number one, he would like to see the front row of Haven Drive annexed into the village. And the second thing is, is he would like to see the field tiles coming from the field behind Haven Drive not flow into our sewer systems. And he just wanted me to make a point that that's his feelings on it tonight since he can't be here.
I mean, the plan's never changed. We just had that concern about the laterals even from the start of this project of the tie-ins, the people going through other people's yards and everything else that so many times. Ken was concerned it was going to be very difficult to figure out who the lateral and who had the problem with that many ties.
I don't understand what you mean by a problem.
Well, intrusion. I mean, if there was water getting into their laterals through old...
And we had also talked about inspectors, I guess, that were going to go around and check downspouts and check sump pumps and do things like that. We talked about that earlier. That's now gone?
Well, there's not much of an issue out there with that. I know that they have checked that back and forth. I walked out, I think with...
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to somehow establish something for these future projects so we're not sitting here after the thing's already been awarded and trying to figure out what we're going to do and who's going to pay for it.
Well, I think the biggest problem was if you have the three lines coming in, it could only be one of them that's bad that you're forcing, who's going to, you know, all three of them should pay equal shares, but if it's one person's problem, isn't it fair to make the other two pay for something that isn't their problem? That's where the issue is, what we were talking about, you know, on that.
With the ground being opened up, we should have just fixed it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know how many sump pumps are out on, in that area?
Those houses out there are slabs. There's only a couple basements out there.
Right. I only know one that's on the front row.
I don't know exactly how many there is.
Doug Donson's old house.
The house Larry had on front row that tri-level, that's kind of...
Is there any other sump in there? Thank you.
Are there any other questions that people have? I mean...
The funding, I know with the additional...
I'm real curious about this last paragraph on there.
I asked them to address that with the additional for the...
We're here to answer whatever questions you guys have.
It says you're asking for 204,000 additional dollars for construction administration compensation on the project that we already have contracts on, and out of the five, I'm assuming three are already completed. I'd really want to hear about that.
Okay. All right, I have, I don't know if you guys have a copy or the proposal that was signed for 2016 construction phases and unfortunately I didn't have enough ahead to bring that to you, so if anybody wants to go through it afterwards, I'd be happy to meet you again and walk you through it. When the proposal was written, it was assumed that the five projects would go together within a six-month construction period. So the way that the inspection proposal was written was for a six-month and actually gave us July 1st, 2016 through July 31st, 2016.
December 31st.
I'm sorry, December 31st, 2016, a six-month construction period. And the way that the projects have gone, of course, they haven't all gone together due to their gas line relocation, utility relocation, funding, wanting to wait till after 2017 to go after the OPWC, the OPWC funding.
WPC?
WPLF, I'm sorry. So in the schedule for the proposal, we had a six-month duration of 1,050 hours of inspection hours. The original proposal was for 225,000 for that six-month period. We've spent 149 of that, so we've actually done the construction on the three projects with the, with the six-month duration and we've spent 149. We had about 75,000, 80,000 left of that original budget, but for the construction going into 2017, there's additional funding. We're assuming it's going to be a nine-month period between, with Clearview starting and then with the downtown project starting. The proposal of additional funds that we're asking for is assuming that there'll be a six-month duration projects. What we've seen and how the construction has been going on the past projects, they have, they've been done a lot quicker, so this would be a maximum not to exceed amount. We had a six-month schedule in there for inspection previously. We had a $225,000 budget. We only spent 149,000 of that within that six-month period. So we're giving them, basically saying that money's still on the table. If we assume what our bid, when we have an onsite inspector, what that, basically how much money we've utilized for that month of inspection, we take the nine months, we come up with the 204 additional thousand that we would need, assuming that those projects go six-month durations. If they're less than that, then we would only spend the money necessary to do those projects.
Have you been in contact with Kent Miller about this?
Yes.
And you know he doesn't agree with you, right?
Nor do I.
Okay.
All right.
He hasn't, he basically said that we needed a panel here and we discussed the issues, but he hasn't said, he just basically said...
Okay.
I will say that I am kind of standing in for Mike Keller who has been doing the coordination and he had previous commitments, so he couldn't be here, so...
Okay.
Bear with me, I'll get through as the best that I can.
That's fine. And Kent being sick, he sent an email out this morning and he was very clearly that he stands by his carryover numbers and he firmly believes he's correct in that area and I'm just pointing that out while everyone's present and so there's no misunderstanding that we're just accepting what you're saying.
Carryover numbers being the amount of money that has been paid to date, 125,000, I think is what the last, we're basically using today's, today's date, as close as we can today, date numbers. He's probably using the last, if it's 125,000, it was the last bill in sight.
He said he has not received a last invoice.
That's it?
Or not received an invoice from you since his earlier emails, so...
And is he talking about, you mean the carryover money of what we're, what we're comparing to the 75,000? Is he talking about the engineering carryover too?
I believe so.
So with the engineering carryover, we haven't filled out the last invoice for the engineering.
Okay.
I think that, I'm pretty sure that everybody's aware that we had, one of the original projects we had that was in the Phase 1 of the LTCP was the Chicago, and it's the Chicago Avenue, which was a drainage basin and a storm sewer. And that project got, it was designed and put on hold due to easement acquisitions. We designed another project, which was Pearl, has gone to construction, didn't ask for additional money on that and, you know, to be on the table. We're probably about $40,000 over budget on that, which we're not invoicing too because I believe Mike Keller had a meeting with, with the mayor and what?
Mike.
Mike. I believe he had a meeting with the two of you and let you know that, you know, we would be good to our word on the design and making sure that that got followed through with no additional cost to the city. So we had designed, the Chicago project is designed on the table, signed, ready to go. It's sitting there and then we also designed the Pearl Avenue project, so there, but...
Designed or redesigned?
The Pearl, which one?
Pearl.
We designed Pearl.
Pearl is already, is already a completed project?
Yes, but I'm seeing under the budget, the engineering proposal.
Cheryl, do you have any, being the fiscal officer and keeping track of all the money and all that kind of stuff, and did you, have you and Kent talked about this?
He keeps his own numbers.
Oh, I know. I know that I will, you know, I'm sure you can discuss that further with Kent. Kent is a very detail-oriented numbers guy and I put all the faith in his numbers and so, you know, we don't have the figures in front of us. There's, I mean, at least I don't, so I, you could tell me all the numbers you want to and where they go, but unless I have it in front of me on paper, I don't know.
I think that as far as the carryover, it's what's been invoiced and we're projected to date. I think that is the only difference between the two hundred.
All right. Well, when Kent gets feeling better, everybody can work that out, so. Any other questions from council or anybody sitting in the audience of council having questions about the Haven Drive project or downtown South Main Street?
Or really anything. I mean, we will hear them to answer whatever concerns that anybody has except for Kent.
I want to say EMHT, with Adam jumping off the project, going somewhere else and Ken Kearns coming on, I think Ken's done a pretty good job of keeping up to date with Jeff and, or you don't think so Jeff? You can, you can veto me.
I think the projects went really well around town. I would agree with Mike on that.
These are huge projects and a lot of money, so we're watching every dime, you know, with all the grants and all the extra costs involved in this and the diming and everything else. It's been a long time since we started these projects and...
We had a couple of good contractors on a couple of those jobs and that saved us.
I will, I will work with any of those two contractors again in a heartbeat. I'm very, very impressed with both of them. They were, they're, some of the better contractors I dealt with and I've been dealing with the contractor for over 30 years, so I...
And they were impressed with you.
Made our job so much easier, believe me, made my job so much easier. And I would expect nothing less from you and from Underground Utilities as well. I mean, I've talked to, I don't, when I do a research on a contractor, I don't call the people that they have in their, their little pamphlet. I go call people that they don't expect me to call and everyone that I've talked to that have worked around them, I actually call their competitors because that's where you really find out how good a contractor they are. And every competitor that I've talked to of them that said, "They're one of the best contractors up here," so I would expect nothing less from them. And I know there were some concerns about the prices that they provided. I went through that with a very fine-tooth comb. They were, what you want to look at is if there is specific bid items that they were low on, that they missed or didn't understand them. There was nothing, no outliers compared to the average of all the other contractors that read, raised any red flags to us at all. They were just low. And when I talked to the contractors or competitors and they said, "That is normal operating procedures for Underground Utilities this time of the year. What they do is they want to keep their, their primary people busy." So they bid a job that's relatively, at relatively high cost just to keep their people working. And I think that's where we are.
Okay.
I saw that we have a 10% contingency fund and then it was recommended possibly by you that we put an additional 10% on.
No, that's, that's not true.
It was only applied once.
Yes. What we, the previous projects, what we did is we had a contingency fund or a force account or whatever, whatever words you want to use, already included in the contract itself. So what we did is we provided a force account amount or a contingency amount as a bid item lump sum in those original projects. On this one, we don't and I'm not, hopefully we don't do it on Brian and Maine, but that's up to you guys as well. I, as far as a construction manager, I do not like having that line item in the contractor's contract because it's a lot harder for me to argue on a change order if they want additional funds for something that's changed and I want to balk at it and I'd say, "No." They already see that money's available to them if it's already in their contracts. I'd much rather do it this way. What we've done is we've taken their bids and then when they go to the funding, we've only asked for additional 10% funding to incorporate any unforeseen things in the funding only, not the contract itself with the, with Underground Utilities. Their contract is what they bid, period. The additional funding, with the additional 10%, was only for funding only, just to cover any...
Okay, that's not the way that I read it in the group of papers that I had. Okay, that's not the way that I read it in the group of papers that I had last week, but, and we openly discussed it.
There should only be one, if for some reason it's showing up as.
It's showing as two.
That is not, that is not the way that it should be, then that is incorrect, because there's only.
We need to get that out of there.
I'm sorry?
We need to get that out of the contract.
It's not in, it's not in.
It's not in the contract.
Get it out of the paperwork.
Yeah, I would have to see the paperwork, because if I don't have the numbers in front of me, because that would be incorrect, there should only be a 10% contingency or if authorized, force account.
Right.
Yes.
And it even baffled our administrator, and as Diane says, he's a numbers guy.
Well, if that would lead a lot of confusion and make you think twice, I.
I think Kent tried to explain it at the last council meeting when it came up.
No, he said it didn't make sense to him either.
Okay.
That's what his words were.
All right.
Has the contract been signed?
We don't, we don't control that at all, so.
Has it been signed?
Well, they just did the bid here, what, about two weeks ago.
Yeah, so we can make sure it's not in there. That's when you do it.
You haven't had a contractor's meeting or anything yet?
No. Pre-con.
Well, you guys need to sign, when will the contract be signed by council?
When we last signed it.
By the mayor?
When we voted on it.
We voted, but nothing's been signed.
Yeah, I thought it was over with.
It's already voted on.
Because I talked to, is it Parnette?
The next day?
On the project for Underground?
One for sewer, one for water.
Last week sometime, and he said, "I think we're going to go in and do the water first."
Cheryl said I already signed the contracts.
Oh, okay, so the contracts were signed.
Well, the resolutions have been signed.
The resolutions, okay, all right. Because I didn't really remember seeing the contracts. They would have been thick books, right?
Yes.
No, I haven't signed those.
Yeah, and in the contract, we know for sure, in the contract itself with, there's no 10% in the contract, so it may be in the resolution, there may be 20% in there, but it should only be 10%.
No, there's no 10% in at all.
Right, should be all right then.
In the contract?
In the resolution.
The resolution, where you had the two boxes, you had the bid amount and then plus 10, only the bid amount is in the resolution, not the plus 10.
Yeah, the 10% should only went to the funding request.
It's not in our resolution.
So once those contracts are signed, let us know, because that, I've talked to the contractor a little bit, I don't want to really contact them or talk to them much until they are under contract, but I just kind of wanted to see what their timing was for the construction for something like that. Once that contract's signed, please let us know, and we will.
Have you seen them, Troy?
I haven't.
Okay.
Usually Kent brings them here to the council meeting and has them all stacked up for me to look through and sign.
Okay.
Just let us know when that happens.
All right. And as Ron Jones said, we have heard really good things about your work, so.
Well, hopefully that doesn't change.
We wouldn't expect it to change.
The contractor himself, Lingby, Tom, we talked to him, very impressed. He wasn't sure at first, out of town, but very happy.
Yeah, there's always that, it's kind of like that first round of a fight when you're dealing with a contractor you don't, haven't worked with, and then from a contractor in engineering not working, kind of feel everybody out a little bit, see how things are going to go, but Tom was solid as earth kind of guy, he just truly is.
Well, you've come a long way, and we appreciate you coming, sticking around town and coming to a council meeting tonight, it's going to get you home kind of late, but, well, if no one else has any other questions, we won't expect you to sit through the rest of our council meeting.
Appreciate it.
Unless you want to.
Again, if anybody wants any copies of anything, the other thing that I gave Cheryl the other day, we put together a little spreadsheet, I think she just sent that around in the summary, we've got that drilled down by each contract, each contract, if you want to see that as well, Cheryl has that information. I just gave you a little snapshot. The red line on that summary page is just a projected, if ClearView went to the full contract amount, where those funding dollars are going to be coming from. Brian and Maine, we're going to, and I mess this up every time, WPC.
WPCLF.
We're going to go and try to get the funding from W.
PCLF.
PCLF, can't do that for some reason. What that's going to do is, as soon as the 1st of January hits, we're going to put the job out to bear, or thereabouts, put the job out to bid, and then request funding from them. It's a yearly thing, so the first person in the kitty generally gets the first funding for that, as a very good place to get your funding as well. The issue is, it's a 90-day before that funding becomes available. So the contract for Brian and Maine cannot start until March. If for some reason we get funding and we don't get approval on funding on that, we'll go through ODWA, and the contractor can actually start earlier. But Brian and Maine may not start until beginning of March, if that funding is awarded to you guys. So that's kind of, that kind of puts us a little issue on the inspection, because it won't allow the contractor, and those overlaps of those two contracts could go as well as we were hoping, but again, we're giving them 60, six months, we expect it really to be done within four.
And this is assuming, this would be assuming that three months in March and then six months.
That's exactly what we're having. So we're kind of giving you guys the worst-case scenario. It's better to ask for that now than come about middle of, middle of summer and then go ask for it tomorrow. If anybody has any questions, feel free. Mike's been great to work with, if you would, kind of go through Mike's part, and then Mike and I will talk, since we've had pretty good communication at that point.
Troy.
And if anybody, if anybody has anything else.
And you're also working, they work very closely with Roberta from our cap, with the funding and everything, she's still helping the village out quite extensively. We haven't seen her in a long time, she hasn't been up here, but I know she's still working for us.
And she changed her last name too, by the way.
Or did she get married?
Well, she would be here, I have no doubt, if we wanted her, but.
She's always done a good job for us, along with the engineers, but.
You should be seeing Antwerp again, seen them already in the consti application as well, so. We have, final thing, we have $6,000 on Ogan, $6,000 on Pearl, and $10,000 on Antwerp as retained, part of that information I gave you as well. That is to make sure the contractor comes back and does the final restoration. We also have their bonds, so even if they walk away, we still go after their bonds, but I like to hold a little money to motivate them to be back early as they can in the spring to get that work done, but they have to wait for the spring rains, a lot of stuff to dry out, before a lot of that restoration can happen, so, but there's, there's money set aside to finish all restoration outside of the pavement sections that we've restored so far.
When's the covers get off, the catch basins?
Soon as the 70% grass coverage of the drainage areas.
Have you seen a difference in water down at the plant?
Yep. It's everything covered, and now it's hard.
I thought maybe someone was getting by anyway.
Yeah, some of it's coming, I watched the outfall of the Antwerp Drive, and there is some flow coming through there, but it's hard telling how much is still going into the sanitary.
You should probably be getting a pretty good flow out of that.
Well, see, most of the catch basins on Antwerp Drive are still covered. The only ones that aren't covered are the intersection up here nearby the.
Yeah, but those are, those are just, I mean, you can pour water through them.
You're still going to get seeped, but yeah, I do see some flow coming through the, through the outfall pipe, so.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your guys' time and.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you, Kim.
You've enlightened us quite a bit.
I will tell you that I love talking to the police chief, he was, he was a pretty funny podcast.
Well, thank you for coming up, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
It's not your cruise.
Thank you. Going on to boards and commissions, you have the minutes from the November Hicks TV meeting in your packet. I don't know if you would have any questions about those minutes, Bill is in the back of the room. And then you have minutes in the packet from a finance committee meeting on December 5th.
That was reported on the last meeting.
Yeah, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Okay. And then we have water sewer committee meeting minutes from 12:05 in the packets. Do you have anything you'd like to explain about those, Mike, or anything else about the committee?
Was this discussed?
Are there any other committees of council that would like to give any reports? I noticed there was a park board meeting last week, and there's no minutes in the packet. Do you want to report on something?
I can report a little bit, I know Eric brought anything from our meeting, we had.
Or maybe Ron has something to report?
Ron, Ron Hart, yes, Ron was there too. We had a great meeting with an engineer, and talked about the two restrooms, the one by the Water Works building that's been tore down, so when is that going to happen yet, this year?
Dumpster's in there, that's a good sign.
It's out there.
Dumpster and the machine have been sitting there for a month.
Shannon told me he was going to start this week, is what he told me yesterday.
I know Eric brought quite a couple of plans that he had come up, I think, online, very good plans, the engineers kind of liked them, the board looked at them, Val and Shaw and Rick, and had a very informative meeting, like I said, it gives them something to work off of for some designs, and then they're working for a Nature Works grant for those projects, for both those, it's a concession stand, I believe, there, and restrooms at the Girls area, and then also a smaller restroom nearby Adventure Alley.
Did you say someone was there from Mommy Valley Planning Organization about the Nature Works grant?
No.
It was like a grant writer that was there, that's going to write the grants, the Zoe.
But not from Mommy Valley?
No.
Okay.
They have a little bit of money in that, it's not a lot, it's worth going after, they wanted to go after a little bit of it.
They have $31,000 for the whole county, so you see what kind of requests they get, they tend to disperse it.
Are they going to look for other grants too, then?
They were going to look into them, but they didn't move any off the end.
Okay.
But yeah, that was for the concession restroom facility at the Girls, and then Adventure Alley, we have two facilities, a small fridge, I mean, I give them set the plans, get the mentions, and they run it, and they're going to try to work on the price, and then the company that had the plans is online, they work with Ohio government agencies, and they were going to give a base price of what they would do for the, just the building portion of it. They usually hire local contractors to do all the building, they just get the plans.
Did you get my email today that I sent out to a couple of people, I got a response that they forwarded it to you? I was just asking if we could find out what the price difference was between just plain flat block and some decorative type of a block for those restrooms? Yeah, something that has a little contour to it or something, or if that's the right word, rather than just a.
A little zazz.
Something that looks a little classier than just a plain block, maybe you guys don't agree, but, and you can stop it.
Harder to get the spray paint off of.
Yeah, true, that's probably true. Thank you for that information. Ron, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Thank you guys for serving on the park board and coming to the meeting. Are there any other committees of council that have any reports to give? Okay, well, we will go on then to the administrator's report, it's in your packet. He is asking council to approve a change order for the Pearl Columbia Hallery Sewer Project in the amount of $3,480. He had mentioned that it was coming up at the last meeting, and it deals with added expense to overlay all the affected streets. So I would ask you to appease Kent, and.
I thought we already agreed to it last meeting.
Well, this is dated December 16th, so.
I would make that motion.
And I would second it.
Okay, roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Pecrotsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Trash collections for the week of Christmas and New Year's will not be affected by the holiday. The route will run on Tuesday and Wednesday as usual, unless weather dictates otherwise, and those are always general pickups. So, leaf season ended with 72 loads being collected, this compares to 65 collected Since we won't be hauling from the lot anymore in 2016, the total for removing grass, leaves and remnants of the old chip pile totaled 101 loads. The lot was ground a couple of weeks ago, and there, and so there is a new mountain for folks to haul out. We will eventually haul what other people don't take, so if there's anything down there in the recycling lot that is ground up, people are welcome to go down and remove it. Then Kent completed in his report commodities stats for 2016. Then going on to the solicitors, yes, yes, Mike?
We had another water main break on Main Street, very, very cold night, late, late at night, they worked from, I think, what, 10:30 to 4:00 in the morning. It was late, it was very cold.
A couple feet down from the last main break on Main, but.
He's got that slated to replace, doesn't he, this year, this coming year, '17?
But he wanted to get it done before they repaved.
Yeah.
Comes in, so, I know this project ain't coming up, but I thank you to all the village crew that went out there, and all the police departments out there for a long, long time, it was cold.
And I was also, it was pointed out to me that the Shell Station provided coffee to the guys during the water main break, and we want to thank the Shell Station and anybody else that provided any support to the village employees while they were on that dig. Probably you did something too, Mike, you usually do.
I went to the Shell Station.
You went to the Shell Station for coffee, and they already had it. But thank you all very much, I'm.
And picked it up.
It was cold and late, as you said. So, Troy, would you like to take over?
First thing I have is ordinance 2016-15, third reading by caption only, the annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village.
And I wanted to bring up something on that, I went to a Defiance County Economic Development meeting last week, and you have kind of a colorful piece of paper in here. The, the Defiance County Economic Development would like to hire its own workforce development person, so they are contacting private investors and also public investors, cities and villages, to ask if they would just up their share a hair to help cover the salary of that person, and, so where we're normally paying 15,000, they're asking for another 1,000 from the village, and you can also see that Defiance County has 5,000 added to their budget for the workforce development, and the City of Defiance also shows that they were asked for 5,000. Now, Mayor Mike McCann did the calculations, and he came up with the fact that Hicksville's paying its share compared to the City of Defiance and other places, which I thought was really interesting, because, I mean, he just said, you know, "Based on population and stuff, we're right on mark," but what the county, from what I understand, the county and the City of Defiance are going to do is, they are not going to pay that additional amount toward a workforce development person until that person is hired and on the job, and, so they're not paying it until it happens, so.
Would there be more attention over here? Because I'm not sure that there's been justification for the 15, this last year or two.
I had a meeting. I had a meeting with Jerry Hayes a couple of weeks ago, and I told him that the Village of Hicksville has concerns about the fact that someone is coming to Hicksville every Tuesday to Rotary, but they're just turning around and going home, because years ago, you guys specifically said you wanted someone in an office in Hicksville one day a week. It lasted for a while, and then it was just dropped, and Jerry assured me that he would get, is it Jennifer Ort, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, right on that. Well, she made four visits to Hicksville, and she wrote up a report to Jerry as he asked for. Well, in the meantime, their office staff just quit this week, or put in their notice to resign, because she's going with the City of Defiance.
Jackie.
Jackie, yeah, so Jackie's going with the City of Defiance, so they're going to give Jennifer Ort, who was Jerry's assistant, Jackie's job now, and so they're going to be searching for a replacement. So, how'd I get on that topic? I don't know, but anyway, you didn't. So, so they realized that Hicksville wasn't satisfied with the job that they were doing, but Hicksville was doing well just on its own. We were lucky, because I think Hicksville's done really well in the past year.
Doesn't mean we should stop.
Right, right.
And if I'm, if memory serves me correct, when they didn't give us a bunch of attention, we withheld $5,000 from them for a period of time, and I want to say it was a couple years, and then they started showing us attention, and there was a movement to pay for that attention, so.
Did you read this article in the Defiance Paper Friday?
I did.
It discusses. It discusses everything that the CIC is doing, their budget, their tours. And it tells of, and I don't know what COACT, C-O-A-C-T, I don't know what that is. But coming from Ms. Kreber, they sent out 715 postcards to site selectors and site consultants for Enterprise Industrial Zone into industrial park. You know, $15,000, they could have threw in Hicksville right underneath it for $15,000. Then they had a developer, Harmon Group. He came to Defiance and they run him all over Fox Run and Enterprise Industrial Park. Could have brought him over here.
I was actually invited to the reception for the Harmon Group that evening. And it was kind of funny because I did go. I was at Defiance College and I met a couple of the Harmon Group and talked to them. And it was kind of funny because then I was at a meeting last Thursday at Defiance and Mayor Mike McCann said, "I saw you schmoozing up that Harmon Group over there." I said, "Yeah, I offered him freely."
Yeah.
It was just funny because he walked away.
But everything that is stated in this whole thing, and then Jerry says that Hillendale Farms outside of Hicksville has started Phase Two and Gordon Creek has announced an 18,000 square foot expansion. That's the only thing about Hicksville.
Have you been on the website?
Oh, yeah.
The CIC saw Hicksville's represented. Did they do better?
Oh, yeah.
But it was hard to get, to raise it up to 15,000. Were you on one? A lot of opposition. We used to give 10, well, 15, a lot of opposition.
It was 15 and then we took it down to 10.
We've been given 15 for the past four years.
I'm personally against the 1,000.
I will also tell you that in some of the business and industries I've gotten around this year, they commonly told me they were trying, they were having problems finding skilled labor. So I got ahold of a Morris Lewis from Workforce Development just to ask him, you know, what do you do and can you come to Hicksville and do something? And he goes, "Yeah, I can come to Hicksville." So I have planned on January 25th, the Business and Industry Meeting at the Community Memorial Hospital, and he's going to come and be the speaker to tell everyone what services they offer and how they'll match up employees with employers. And they have job training and all that kind of stuff. So for anybody that comes, you know, that'd be an informational thing, and I feel so... What they would expect out of someone that they want to hire individually that he couldn't provide to us? I don't know. Because he actually, I was impressed with how quickly he responded.
What's the date on that?
January 25th. I can send out the invitation. I thought that I would mail it to all Business and Industries in Hicksville.
So it's going to start up again after the first year?
Well, if they think there's a need. We're also buying their lunch. It's in my budget.
It's more than schmoozing. You don't have plenty of money.
But $15,000 for the CIC to help us, that's a... You couldn't hire somebody part-time, I don't believe.
Right.
Just keep on them, say, "Hey, we need more."
Hello, Mr. Jackie. I'll tell you that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you just need, you know, some attention. I mean, I don't, obviously, the way I always felt about it is some of the work, they don't have to physically be sitting in Hicksville in the mayor's office to be working on Hicksville projects. They could be sitting in Defiance submitting Hicksville sites to things and doing things like that. But having reports or showing up at council meeting or whatever to update you or whatever, that seems like that ought to go with the territory.
You're kind of spoiling this.
Right, right.
So right now, the $1,000 that they're asking for, for a workforce development person is not in your appropriations that he is reading right now for the third reading. But if you want to add it, then we'll need to, you'll just need to say that it's included in the third reading.
I'm not too fond of the 15.
So it's all you, Troy?
That was the third reading we just did, so...
I still move. That's appropriations, right? For this year? I still move.
I'll second.
For the 15. Whatever. That's all our appropriations.
15, that was. Shouldn't we vote on them separate?
What's your question, Ron?
Shouldn't we vote on them separate?
This is the third, well, there's no change. It's the same way it's been proposed to you for the first two readings. I mean, the appropriations is the same.
The only thing that was changed was the splash pad contingency.
And this is by emergency.
There's money there for the pull.
Yeah.
$50,000 contingency.
So we need to pass it as an emergency too because of the timing of it.
Oh, okay. I move we suspend rules.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Just a second. That's all right. Okay. Pikretzky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Nope.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Can I also make a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Nope.
Jones?
Yes.
Pikretzky?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
So next is ordinance 2016-16, which is the third reading by caption only. An ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees and declaring it a... Again, the timing of the, being the end of the year and having those ready for the...
I would make the first motion. You want it for emergency? Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Roll call, please. Beverly?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Pikretzky?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Next is ordinance 2016-18, first reading by caption only. An ordinance amending section 157.12 of the Code of Order ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to extend longevity pay to employees of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio. This is...
Just extrapolate and I would look further than I did.
Yes. It used to stop at 25 years, I think. And so, is that right, Cheryl, 25 years?
Yes.
And this was a recommendation of committee or somebody, correct?
Mm-hmm. Back in January, one of the committees recommended this. That was December, December on 2015, not my watch.
And Cheryl and I had a discussion today. This is just the first reading. But if you look in the section A where it talks about when they originally passed this longevity pay section was 2003. And so it says, "Shall be entitled to longevity bonus commencing in the year 2003 and each year thereafter." And I guess what we were concerned about is, and I may recommend changing the language a little bit, is if you get somebody that got their 35 years in before today, we'll say, but after 2003, we didn't want, and I, maybe we're talking to a couple of people, maybe whatever, we didn't want them necessarily coming back and saying, "Hey, I got my 35 years in in 2006, so I want my money from that." So if that was the intention, and I don't even know which committee it was out of...
Personal.
The intention was like, from this point forward, anybody that hits 35 years, 40 years, 45...
I think we just wanted to get it incorporated.
Right.
Because we were having people who were eclipsing the figures we had.
Right.
Just a one-time payment when you hit that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just along. So what I think I would do is before the next reading, reword that part where it says "commencing in the year 2003" to make it. And so after we pass this, it's more specific to "based upon this recommendation."
So should we just do the...
It's just the first reading.
First reading and you're going to tweak it?
Yeah.
If the committee tells you to or how are you going to follow up or whatever? Or you're just going to...
I think he basically said the...
Go ahead.
I won't be here.
But he knows the intent of the committee, so he can tweak it for the next meeting. Okay, all right.
And then next is ordinance 2016-19, first reading by caption only. An ordinance to levy a tax for fire protection. The Village of Hicksville directing the Defiance County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors authorizing an additional tax levy for such purposes and declaring an emergency.
And I have something to say about that. There's nothing else on the ballot right now. So if we do it in May, Hicksville's to pay the whole thing. We don't share with anybody. Because we'd be the only thing on the ballot. And if we wait till November, it doesn't matter, you're going to get your money at the same time anyway, either May or November.
How much is it if we're the only one? I guess might as well wait till November if it doesn't make any difference.
Well, it's up to you guys.
But there's one thing to think about, I guess, too, is will there be a bunch of other stuff on the ballot from, I mean, that might, you know, compete with it? I mean, nothing from Hicksville perhaps, but...
They didn't give you a ballpark, like it's going to cost you 2,500 or something like that?
Well, Board of Elections said like over $5,000. But when I talked to the auditor, she wouldn't tell me how much it was going to be.
Really, over $5,000?
A lot.
I guess we're looking at November, huh?
And she said she thought in November, no one's up for reelection in November?
Yes.
Because we're already paying. So to pay for one more item on the ballot wouldn't be that much. But if we have to pay for all, the whole entire ballot. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Councilman, 54 seats for council.
Well, you're right in the fact that it's, the money would still come in at the same time. So would we...
It's a better chance to pass though in the spring.
I move we let that lie.
Don't we have a fire guy here?
No. Oh.
What's that?
What's your opinion?
Well, having a mayor in November. Oh, mayor in November. It's a toss-up, I think. If you give us in November, the fire department, ladies auxiliary can hit, you know, do a good spread on it. But if it's March...
Or May.
We won't have a lot of time to react to it.
That's a good point, Jim.
And I, I'm not speaking for Scott, but I think November would probably be your best bet. Just because the money, I mean, we're not gaining anything.
Right.
If we're spending $5,000, that's like, we might as well just pitch it out the window.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money to us, I mean, to the fire department. So, I mean, it'd give us a time to...
Let's let it lie.
We have a motion to let it lie. Does anyone want to second it?
I'd support that motion.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Pikretzky?
Yes. So next would be ordinance 2016-20, a first reading by caption only. An ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. That has the most recent updated figures.
You get this every year from me at least once or twice to clean up the line items, get them out of the hole. So...
We need to suspend the rules. I'll do that.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second roll call, please. Pikretzky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Beverly?
We're on the appropriations.
I'm amending it, yeah. Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
So second, third reading ordinance 2016-20 by caption only. Ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Pikretzky?
Yes.
And then the last two things, I think it shows on there. The attorneys for the bank, Five Acre Mill, forwarded on the subordination documents that we talked about before. I reviewed them. The mayor already had them here and they've since been signed. The revolving loan app that Gordon Creek granted, my understanding is I made some recommended changes today to Dennis Miller and the planning commission people and that they were trying to get those incorporated to see if they could somehow, it's tough with the holidays, but somehow get it closing sometime this week, maybe even before the holiday to get that in. So they got that right before I came over here today. That's like the last thing that I sent over there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Cheryl, I'm glad you picked up on that $5,000 election fee to put that on in the spring.
I made sure they'd still get their money at the same time.
You know, I always had a line item in the budget for election expenses and have not only ever used it once and that's only once did we ever have to pay that for that.
So when do we have to have it in for November? We got that date?
No.
So we don't forget.
I just got the May one done.
Okay. Can we pass that? Next meeting, go ahead and light it up so we don't, so we have it?
So we can sit it down.
I think we can.
Six months early.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that says...
I'll check with the auditor, make sure.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Troy or anything you need to ask him? All right. Thanks, Troy. So then going on, Police Chief Ballinger, do you have anything you would like to report to us?
I do. I just want to bring councilman mayor up to date. Just a few statistics that in 2015, we arrested 269 adults. And to present, this year, 430 adults. Those would have went to Defiance Municipal Court, Hicksville Mayor's Court, and some of them to Common Pleas Court. Both years, we arrested 20 juveniles. Of course, those would have went to juvenile court. 2015, we had 2,455 complaints. And that equaled out to 6.7 per day. 2015, we had 2,455 complaints, and that equaled out to 6.7 per day. And this year, to date, we're at 2,847. That's average eight per day. We're up to 62 accidents. That would be OH1s, that would be the accidents that occurred on streets, highways, whatever. That wouldn't be private property accidents. The private property accidents would actually be in the complaint form, short form. And that's just to bring you up to date. Anybody got any questions or anything?
Why the uptick?
Pardon?
Why the uptick?
I don't know.
Your arrest, that's, that's big crimes and traffic, everything all together, correct?
Yes. Yeah. That includes income tax summons.
I picked that quite a bit in last year.
Last year, you gave us a breakdown of what type of claims.
I did not have them with me now.
Were you going to do that, I mean, at year end?
Yeah, I could.
Okay.
But I have them with me now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know what the, why the, you know, the, the numbers are up, but they are, so... Actually, they're down from 2014. In 2014, we had 2,876 complaints, so that would be 30 more, but I doubt if we get, well, we might get 30 by the end of the...
Average an A J.
So, yeah. Who knows? You never know.
Yeah.
So...
Keep Fisher at home.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Thank you very much for that information.
I'd like to thank council for the raise that we give us this year. It's appreciated.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thanks for what you do.
You're safe.
Bruce, are you here for, in the fire chief's place?
Yeah.
Would you like to...
Nope.
No report?
We have nothing. I'll have a report for you next council meeting.
Well, it says Cody Sanders has completed his probationary period on our minutes.
I guess.
So...
I'll bring it up.
I would recommend we take him off probation.
I would support the mayor's recommendation, and we take Cody Sanders. Second.
Roll call, please.
Pecrotzky?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yep.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
I do not see the EMS chief here.
They're doing the Christmas for kids.
She told me she was...
She called you this afternoon.
Yeah, she did. Yep.
Did you give the report, Bob?
I'm going to give it later.
We have, we're at the fiscal officer's report.
Mine's short. I just have the cash statement, and MediaCom has sent a letter with another rate hike. And I also have their franchise fee report. And April Allen has also completed her probation successfully.
Okay. I would recommend that we take April off of probation.
I move we accept the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Pecrotzky?
Yes.
Well, I already gave you the CIC information, so... But does anyone have any other questions for Cheryl? Okay. Then we'll go on to the mayor's report. I would like to thank everyone involved with the Christmas for Kids. Lonnie and Cody and everybody over there's done a lot of work toward that, gathering the information up and gathering the toys and loading everything up. The EMS chief reported to me that they had 78 families this year, which included 158 children. She told me that was a little lower than last year. So that's a good sign to me, that, you know, there were less needy families in the community. But we thank everybody over there, and everybody that donated and had anything to do with collecting anything for Christmas for kids. It's a great community project. Like to thank our village employees for their great snow removal job. I think they've got all of our residents very spoiled, because if the residents don't think things happening fast enough, they'll call us. But I think the guys are pretty fast on it, myself.
Go drive around to find them.
I have heard that we're in pretty good shape just compared to some other places around us, but our guys do a great job. And I guess, at this time, we're about down to the point, oh, I guess I have one more thing. Someone left a note on my desk today that someone's dumping cats out on 49, and it's an ongoing problem. And they want me to bring it up at a council meeting and get it in the paper to make people aware of this, to stop dropping cats off, and that this weather is just too horrible for animals to be dropped off someplace.
They're coming from the village?
Well, it's not known where they're coming from, but...
Come on in.
I don't know.
I noticed there were some cats out front tonight when I come, so on her way leaves, be careful of not in your cars.
Were you feeding them?
No, anything. I'm going to blow your horn before you start your move.
Nick, could we have you come up, please, on the...
Sheila, I like this.
I'm ready now.
We'll need a meeting next January.
Nick, you've done a great job for our community all this year.
Maybe I'm not even on it. This one here is quite years ago, you think.
And we have a small token of our appreciation.
Another one.
And to Councilman Mitt for Pesci for 1997 to 2016, does that sound right? With sincere thanks for your service to the Village of Hicksville. We tried to get you something simple that wouldn't take up too much space on your fireplace manor.